I'd like to call the order. The October 18th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. Welcome to all of you. No, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Monette?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Vice Chair Coburnstein?
Here.
Chair Kissner?
No, would you like to introduce the new people to the staff before we start tonight?
Thank you, Chair Kissner. Just briefly want to introduce Lily Bianco, Contract Planner, and she'll be assisting the department with the review of current development. So folks coming in with questions at the counter, she may be able to help you, or phone calls, or folks who are applying for current development projects Lily may be assigned to them. She comes from M Group and specializes in historic preservation and environmental review. And I believe Director Palmer also has an announcement.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to introduce Erica Almond Smithies, who's sitting here in the front row. She's the newly hired Assistant Director of Public Works, and she likely will be taking over management of current development projects on behalf of the department. Erica comes to us most recently from Petaluma, the city of Petaluma, but she's also worked here in the valley and lives here in Napa Valley.
Thank you. Our next item is public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Because of the restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Is there any open public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Next item are the consent items. Members of the commission or public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless this is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommendations. Anyone want to pull anything? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move approval of the consent items.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Chair Kissner?
Yes. Next items are public hearings. And 5.1 is a design review of 1,300 block, in the 1,300 block of Moneyway, and that has been pulled and will be continued at a later date. 5.2 is a design review of 1,580 Hillview Place. The applicant Perry and Christine Clark. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kissner. The existing 7,800 square foot parcel of 1,580 Hillview Place is currently developed with a 1,315 square foot, one-story, single-family residence with a 320 square foot attached garage and 373 square foot enclosed rear patio. The applicant is seeking design review approval to substantially remodel the existing home, including the addition of a second story over the garage. Proposed changes would result in approximately 1,550 square feet of living space on the first floor, including a 300 square foot garage, and 882 square feet of living space on the new second story above the existing garage. This remodel would include moving the footprint of the home approximately five feet away from Stockton Street, as well as removing several walls of the enclosed rear patio. The remodel in addition would result in the home going from three bedrooms and two bathrooms to four bedrooms and three bathrooms, with the majority of the bedroom space moving from the first floor to the second floor. The home would be finished with board and batten and horizontal siding and a black standing seam metal roof. The overall height of the home would increase from approximately 16 and 1/2 feet to just over 24 feet. As far as the floor area ratio is concerned, the applicant is proposing 2,533 square feet of floor area for a far of .32, which is approximately 57 square feet below the maximum square footage permitted. The existing home does have an enclosed rear patio area that is considered non-conforming as it doesn't meet the required 20-foot setback. As part of this application, the applicant proposes to remove several of the walls that currently enclose the patio, thereby decreasing the degree of this nonconformity. The project as proposed meets all other development standards for the medium-density residential district, including lot coverage, floor area, and height. Homes in the project vicinity vary in size and design, including numerous two-story homes, one of which is immediately next door to the project site. Staff believes that the proposed project is consistent with the required design review criteria and that the proposed configuration of the site, the overall design elements, and proposed materials and finishes are in character with the neighborhood and the community in general, and therefore recommends that the planning commission approve the project. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Anyone have any?
The applicant is here, in case you have any questions of the applicant.
Anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have to disclose the next part I spoke with the applicants, probably over a year ago, and these are not the plans that I saw when I spoke with them, though.
All right, I'm going to open public comment. Would the applicant like to speak? Would any? Would anyone else like to speak on this project? I'll quote as public comment. Mary, would you like to start the discussion?
Well, it's nice to see a house getting bigger when somebody who lives here actually is going to continue to live in it. So I don't have any problem with this. I think moving bedrooms up to the second floor makes a lot of sense for a family. The overall floor plan is fine. I have no objection. The second floor, the windows are, in the bedrooms, are up high, so they're not peering over the neighbor's property. I have no issues with this.
Commissioner Sweeney?
No, and I also just want to compliment the applicant on the microphone, the graphic. I thought it was really helpful. Just, no additional comments, other than just to compliment the applicant on the, I think the graphic is very helpful to put in perspective where, what the house will look like relative to other neighbors. And I agree with what Commissioner Coburnstein said about bedrooms upstairs.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker?
I also don't have a problem with the application. I think it fits with the neighborhood, and there's also respect to privacy of the neighbors. And if, since the neighbors don't seem to have any objections.
Ditto. It just seems like a great plan, and everyone's happy, no one's complaining. Wow, what more could we want?
I like the project a lot, and I certainly thank the applicant for putting together the design of the neighborhood. I think that really was helpful to me today. Do I hear a motion?
Let's see. I move that we determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15301, which exempts the minor alteration of existing private structures, and Section 15303, which exempts the construction or conversion of small structures, including single-family residences, garages, pools, et cetera, and that we accept the required findings and approved design review for the proposed remodel in addition to the resident located at 1,580 Hillview Place.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Kissner?
The next item is a design review of 1,541 Shabbos Circle. The applicant is Anthony Phillips.
I need to recuse myself from this one. I'm within 500 feet.
Thank you, Chair Kissner. So applicant Anthony Phillips is requesting design review approval to perform a renovation that includes the addition of two new bathrooms, a new closet, and a morning room, which is essentially a sitting room or family room, which would increase the home's square footage by a total of 283 square feet. Also proposed are a series of exterior modifications that include new fenestration, the replacement of areas of diagonal siding with horizontal square edge tongue and groove siding, the installation of a standing seam metal roof on select areas, a new cupola vent over the bathroom addition, a new partial rear deck enclosure, new trellis at the building entrance, and the introduction of drought-tolerant landscaping, and a new wire and wood fence at the property frontage. The subject property is a residential lot of approximately .32 acres. It's improved with one single-family residence and one attached double-car garage in southwest St. Helena, and it exhibits an FAR of .148. The property is zoned low-density residential and is in conformance with all applicable development standards. The proposed modifications are limited to cosmetic updates and a limited increase in the square footage of 283 square feet, which is not expected to substantially alter the size, scale, or area of the single-family residence. And the property will continue to meet all development criteria, including height, setback, and floor area. Under the requirements for low-density residential, a 13,939 square foot parcel is allowed, a maximum FAR of .277. The applicant is proposing a total floor area of 2,634 square feet or an FAR of .189, which is within the maximum allowed. The subject property is located within the Sylvaner Estate subdivision. The homes in the subdivision feature a variety of materials detailing form and massing. However, the neighborhood is generally unified by an overall consistency in height, setback, neutral color palette, and by the presence of landscaping and vegetative screening at most property frontages. The exterior modifications that would be most visible from street view and would therefore have the greatest visual impact include the replacement of areas of diagonal siding with the horizontal square edge tongue and groove siding, the metal roofing on additions, new cupola over the bathroom addition, new trellis at the entry, a new front door, and the proposed wire and wood fencing at property frontage. The proposed metal roofing and new siding will be muted gray in an effort to provide continuity in the color palette and to avoid creating any dissonance with the existing materials. It's the applicant's intention that the introduction of the proposed materials will provide for a more contemporary look, but also be muted enough to still present kind of a unified overall appearance and consistency with the surrounding neighborhood. The facade of the house is and will continue to be partially obscured by landscaping. Given that no changes are proposed that would substantially alter the size, scale, or height of the house, and that the proposed addition and cosmetic changes appear to be relatively consistent with what's existing in the surrounding properties, staff recommends that the commission accept the required findings enumerated in Municipal Code Section 17.164.030 and adopt a resolution approving design review for the project.
Thank you.
And I believe that the applicant may want to speak.
We have any questions? Staff first? No? Open public comment, would the applicant like to speak?
To answer any questions you might have, I also brought a colored material board for your review, if you'd like to see that.
Anyone else like to speak on this? Closing public comment?
You want to see the board? You've got to see the board.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
You've got a storyboard.
Oh, I love storyboards. I beg your pardon, sir.
Tell the story.
The board tells the story, Bobby.
Pretty much tells the story. This is our new batten to be applied to.
Excuse me, sir. Do you mind going up to the podium and speaking to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Is this better? Thank you. So the three and a quarter, three and a half inch bat is what I'm going to apply to the siding as it is right now. It's just a T-111, basically, that look. And the horizontal siding is a 1x18NG product that is in the gray coloration. So very muted palette. I also have on display the roof, the metal standing seam roof that is in the light gray that will match nicely with the existing composition roof that's on there now. And then some assorted pictures of the new high-efficiency windows that we'll be putting in. Any questions that I might answer beyond this?
So you're going to use a mixture of the T-111 and the horizontal siding?
Yes.
That's what I thought from the plans.
It will be a board and bat.
Any other questions, the applicant? And now does anyone else want to speak? All right, now we'll close public comment. Commissioner Parker, do you have any comments?
No, it's a relatively small change, just a, you know, a bathroom, morning room, and an enclosed deck. I think it fits in with the neighborhood, and no objections from the neighbors.
Yeah, I feel the same way. Nobody's complaining, and it's your heart's desire, and it's really nice, very pretty. Thanks. I mean, I approve it. And thanks for, you know, for making it beautiful and making it in scale.
Yeah, nothing to add, looks beautiful, and it'll fit nicely into that area.
I like it a lot, and I thank you for bringing the storyboard. I really appreciate those. Do I hear a motion, please?
We can find it. I move the planning commission recommend that we accept and determine that the project is categorically exempt from requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA Section 15301, existing facilities, as the minor alteration of an existing private structure involving a negligible expansion of use beyond that existing at the time of the lead agency's determination. And number two, accept the required findings enumerated in Municipal Code 17.164.030 and adopt a resolution approving design review for the proposed Philippi resident remodel.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Chair Kissner?
The next item, item four, is a design review of 2175 Palmer Drive. It's 5.4. The applicant is Holder Design Associates. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Kissner. Applicant Holder Design Associates is requesting design review approval on behalf of property owners Ryan and Heather Peterson to perform a series of exterior modifications at 2175 Palmer Drive in the LR1A zoning district. The proposed modifications for the primary residence include replacement of the roof frame and reduction in width of roof eaves, replacement of the existing roof with a dark bronze standing seam metal roof with skylights, a new chimney, replacement of all existing fenestration with wood-clad windows and doors, patching and repair of stucco cladding, the introduction of a front porch with steel frame trellis at the building's entrance. And the project also proposes replacement of the brick walkway with pavers, and then replacement of the garage roof to be consistent with that of the primary residence, and replacement of the arched garage doors with square garage doors. The subject property is a residential lot of approximately 1.25 acres, not the 4.25 that's in the staff report. It's improved with one single-family residence and one detached garage in northwest St. Helena. The current lot coverage is 8.1% with an FAR of .072. The property exhibits a zoning designation of LR1A, which is low-density residential, one acre minimum. Review of the project indicates that it meets all applicable development standards. The exterior modifications are limited to cosmetic updates and won't substantially alter the size, scale, or area of the residence or detached garage. No changes are proposed for the site or landscaping, with the exception of the new foundation for the proposed porch and the introduction of pavers between the garage and the house. At present, the residence meets all the development criteria, including height, setback, and floor area prescribed by the municipal code, and will continue to do so with only very minor changes to the existing condition. The change in FAR is negligible and will change from .072 to .071, both of which are within the allowable FAR of .118. The proposed project is located off of Palmer Drive and is partially shielded from view due to the presence of vegetation and tree canopy. Proposed exterior changes include the introduction of a dark bronze standing seam metal roof, new chimney, the replacement of fenestration, repair of the stucco, and introduction of a front porch, as shown on the project plans. The alterations are generally limited to cosmetic updates to provide for a more contemporary appearance. Given that, given that no changes are proposed that would substantially alter the size, scale of the house, or height of the house, and that proposed changes appear to be of a scale, massing, and quality of design that is compatible with the existing construction and that of adjacent buildings and structures, staff recommends that the planning commission accept the required findings and approve the proposed project.
And I can answer any questions.
Are there any questions, staff?
I was wondering if, I don't know if this is for staff or the applicant, but there's going to be a new chimney. I was just wondering if the fireplace is up to standard code. If it's not, is there any, is there any suggestion that there be a gas fireplace, or that it become, you know, that it's not, if it is substandard, that it be brought up to the standard codes for fireplaces?
Yeah, that I do not know, but I believe the applicant is here.
Just a minute, please, sir. Any other question to staff? All right, open public comment, now the applicant, please.
Yes, I'm Kenneth Holder with Holder Design. And to speak directly to that question, the existing wood burning fireplace is not going to be retained. We're going to replace it with a gas burning. Right. I did bring a colored material board, if it's worth distributing that. We could do that, if people would want to see. So, as you can see, we're proposing, basically, it is, as she said, an aesthetic upgrade, just to bring the house a little bit more into contemporary taste. The house is sighted very nicely on the lot. All of the existing landscape is basically being retained or tuned up to make it more drought tolerant. And we're just proposing a simple upgrade to the house itself, just, which is mostly aesthetically limited to the roof lines and this new front porch. We're trying to make the house more social and to acknowledge the street, the existing, you could see it from the previous, well, the current entry into the house is kind of obscured and not very clear. So we felt like this house had a more social aspect to it. So if there were, I don't know if there's any need to go through it, it's not a very controversial project. Thank you.
Any other comments? Close public comment. Commissioner Sweeney, would you like to start the discussion?
Sure. Echo the applicant or the architect. It's not that controversial. I think it's straightforward. I think it's in good taste. It's in good keeping with that neighborhood. It's protected. I mean, those lots back there, they're not on top of one another, and I think that the neighbors are happy. We're happy with it.
Thank you. Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yeah, looking at this case, this is where I would make a mental note that when we review the zoning ordinance, we should look at the design review exemptions. I mean, this is largely cosmetic. It's not a brand-new house. I don't know how long it took to get it here, or, you know, the effort to bring it to the planning commission, but in my mind, this is something that should just be approved
That sounds good. Easier for everyone. And, yeah, I have, you know, no, nobody's complaining, again, and I love the idea of it becoming more welcoming. And, you know, I wouldn't even think of that if, you know, when I look at houses, that's not what comes to mind, but it will be now, and I think that's a very heartfelt perspective. I fully approve the project.
And I also am in support of this project. I feel like we're getting a lot of softballs for really hooker ball that we're about to warm up to. So, yeah, I'm in support of the project. Let's get going with the winery. Get the gloves on.
I agree with all the remarks that have been made. And I was going to pull this tonight, anyway, and ask to put it in the consent calendar, but I wanted to get familiar with our new person over here, so I thought it was only fair that we let her make her presentation. Do I hear a motion, please?
I move to determine that this project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA Section 15301, existing facilities, as the minor alteration of existing private structure involving a negligible expansion of use beyond that existing at the time of the lead agency's determination, and accept the required findings enumerated in the Municipal Code Section 17.164.030, and adopt a resolution approving design review for the proposed Peterson residence remodel.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Coburnstein?
Yes.
Chair Kissner?
Yes. Next item is 5.5. It's a demolition permit, design review, and use permit for 867 Dowdell Lane, and the applicant is Tom Redman. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kissner. I'd like to make a note that the final two sheets of the plan set in the packet that was distributed are a little outdated. New civil plan sets have been placed on the dais for your review and at the table at the back. And with that, bear with me, this is a pretty long one. This project essentially consists of repurposing several buildings on existing industrial zone site into a 24,000-gallon-per-year production winery without tastings or visitation, including a separate commercial kitchen space for use outside of wine production. As part of the project, the existing guest bedroom would be relocated behind the main residence and would be used for storage purposes. The existing storage building would be relocated to the rear center of the property and would be used as a winery lab and storage area. The existing barn would remain in place and would be used for barrel storage. The existing garage would be demolished in order to make way for a proposed commercial kitchen. The existing well pump house would remain at its current location and would be used as an accessory structure. The project also includes a concrete crush pad and work pad in front of the barn. No permanent covers are proposed for these areas in order to preserve views of the barn facade. The hours of operation at the winery expected to be from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. during most months of the year, with some necessary expansion of work hours during harvest. The applicant anticipates having two full-time employees and two, excuse me, two part-time employees at the winery. This is an appropriate use for an industrial zoned area, and I'll reiterate that retail sales and tasting are prohibited in the industrials district, so that is something that can't be allowed. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, an initial study and mitigated NIG declaration was prepared for the project and circulated for public review, including distribution to numerous state agencies, including CalChan and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. No comments were received on this document. As noted in the staff report, Katie is... As noted in the staff report, catering establishments are permitted use in the industrial district. However, dwelling units in conjunction with an approved industrial use and wineries excluding retail sales and tasting are a conditional use. The larger residential structure would be considered legal nonconforming as it above the 850-square-foot limit placed on dwelling units in the industrial district. As there's no increase in the square footage or intensification of use proposed for the two existing residential living quarters on site, the degree of nonconformity would not increase. Only two setback requirements apply to the project. There is a minimum 20-foot setback from any street or public right-of-way and a minimum three-foot clearance between building and property boundaries. Building B and Building E, the existing barn and secondary dwelling unit, are only five-and-a-half feet from the property line and are therefore considered nonconforming. No square footage is being added to either building, and in fact, the barn is being reduced by 133, 163 square feet. Therefore, there's no increase in the degree of nonconformity. While Building D doesn't currently meet the three-foot property line setback, upon its relocation, it will be setback nearly 15 feet, which means the site will be more conforming, should it be approved. Although the existing barn and other structures are not listed on the city's Historic Resources Master List, because of the barn's age, strong visual presence, and location, historical resource evaluation for the project was conducted, and several conditions of approval were added based on the recommendations of the historical evaluator. The applicant has provided 12 on-site parking spaces, including one ADA compliance space. However, the site is large enough to accommodate additional off-street parking should the need arise. The proposed project is required to comply with the city's water neutrality policy. As such, a water use report was prepared by Delta Consulting and Engineering. This report concluded that from the use of high-efficiency fixtures and toilets at the project's water use will be less than the preconstruction water use and meet the city's water neutrality requirement. The addition of a winery and commercial kitchen is suitable for the parcel with respect to wastewater treatment and disposal. The amount of wastewater generated is not expected to adversely affect the City of St. Helena's wastewater treatment system. It should be noted that staff received no letters or other correspondence in opposition to the project. Finally, staff finds that the project resulting from the proposed demolition permit, design review, and use permit is in character with the industrial district, and that proposed changes will not negatively affect surrounding properties. Because of this, staff concludes that the appropriate findings can be made and recommends that the planning commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project, and accept the required findings, and approve the demolition permit, design review, and use permit for the proposed winery and commercial kitchen and eight six seven Dowdel Lane. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions to staff?
Just to be clear, all the residence, the residential structures are being converted to other uses, really?
No. I believe one, the applicant can speak to it.
Storage and...
One of them's storage, and I believe one of them's going to remain a residence.
And used as a residence?
Yes.
There's some talk in here, I'm trying to find it, about work, work living place, a work residence. Is that part of, he says one of the buildings can be used for that. It wasn't clear to me if that was going to be taken in consideration when figuring out the wastewater or what. Do you want me to find it?
Yeah. All uses on site were considered in the water analysis.
Well, it's not, whatever. Okay, I'll have to find what I'm talking about.
Any other questions? I'll open the public comment. Is the applicant here? This is Oldford.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the commission, staff. My name is Donna Oldford. I'm the planning consultant to Lisa Mangelson and to Tom Redmond on this project. And we have, we have Paul Kelly, our architect, here tonight. I think we have our engineer. Geez, you went so fast through your agenda. But we'll see if we can be the engineer if he doesn't get here in time. Just a few words, I want to introduce you to Lisa Mangelson and Tom Redmond, and let them introduce themselves to you. And I want to say first that I want to commend your staff on really very thorough staff report, and they came out to the side, and we worked very effectively with them back and forth to answer questions, and this has been very timely, and I really appreciate that. We all do. The winery as in a use in this industrial park is, we feel it's a very good use, and we think it's an excellent reuse in preserving a structure that, the barn that does have cultural and historical significance. It isn't always that we can find a suitable use for doing this, so we're very pleased about that. As Erin pointed out to you, the industrial zoning does not allow events or any wine tasting, and so the Redmond, Tom and Lisa are looking for a, actively looking for a tasting room elsewhere. And I'll let them speak to you about that effort when they, when they talk with you. The commercial kitchen is an allowed use on the property, as Erin pointed out. We don't have any variances, any requests for variances or any other exceptions, just one exception that I'll speak to about the sidewalk. Our SEQA document, as you, as you noticed, has no significant impacts and has had no comments. The, there was a question, I believe that Commissioner Monette, you had a question about a groundwater analysis that was done with a previous winery project, the Davies Project. And that was done by Slade and Associates. We actually volunteered to do that when, when the Davies Project was before the city. And we were relying on the findings of that study for purposes of this project for two reasons. First of all, when Slade did the study, they looked at groundwater, which is, you know, is available to any of the projects in this general area of the same aquifer. Also, their findings were that the effect that the Davies Winery would have had on groundwater was just infinitesimally small. I mean, it was such a small fraction of way under one percent that it just didn't even come up on the radar screen. There was just absolutely no effect whatsoever. And we have a very reliable source, because fortunately, the closest groundwater well is the city's well, and the city had excellent records on that in terms of monitoring that well. So we feel very confident about the findings of that study done by Slade. And of course, the city's well is on the same side of the Highway 29 as, as the Redmond Winery Project with Davies across the highway. Not that that makes a difference. Aquifer doesn't recognize streets and roads and easements, but that's, I hope that answers the questions that you had. I want to, I want to point out that we have requested a waiver of the standard condition of approval, which requires a straight sidewalk and curb and gutter treatment. We feel it's appropriate in this location for two reasons, because we're trying to preserve the site and the appearance of the site, which is part of the Secretary of Interior Standards, and the appearance of the site is more agricultural oriented. It is a segue into the vineyards and other agricultural uses there. And there is existing landscape in that area that has matured and looks very nice. So Lisa and Tom are proposing, as is shown in your plans, they are proposing that the city consider this as an alternative, a meandering pathway, and to leave the existing landscape in place. We think it fits with the historic significance of the overall site. We think it also is a nice treatment to make this look like less than an urbanized use, especially since we are right at a kind of a buffer zone between the large vineyard holdings and the industrial uses. And finally, I really want to commend my client and the neighbors, because we sent out a letter to everyone on the noticing list, we followed up with meetings with the closest neighbors, and we were very pleased to have two meetings with Pam Starr. We had also sent information to Mr. Crocker, and Pam met with us, I think, twice. And she's in Harvest, of course. So we didn't, we didn't get the letter, and I'm sure there's a very good reason for that, but we had very good meetings with her. And then Doug Stanton is here tonight. I really want to thank him for coming tonight and thank him for the hours of time that he spent with us explaining his concerns and reading and looking at these plans, and that, I think that's, this is one of the reasons we, we don't have problems tonight or opposition. And so thank you, Doug, for all the time you spent. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We have our experts here to answer questions in engineering or the design and architecture, the design review component. I would say if you have questions for me now, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I'd like to introduce Lisa Mangelson and Tom Redmond and let them speak to you. Any questions?
Well, I have a response. Thank you for addressing my concerns that I took in, but I just wanted to let you know that when I asked about the aquifer, when that study was done for the Davies Project, the, the planning director told me that it would be because the aquifer was unknown in that area, no one knew what water was connected to what water, that, that there was no, you know, that there, that it was considered that it would have a very small effect on whatever it, if, you know, whatever aquifer it was going into, but that really they didn't understand how the aquifer worked over there. So that was the information I had, apparently erroneous information, or at least it's different from what you were telling me. So I would, I would love to look at that, that study if, at some point, just so I can clarify my mind how to think about it, because I'm, it's a little confusing. But that's what precipitated my, part of what precipitated my question.
I understand. I think that's very reasonable, too. And, and I will say that your staff, your very excellent staff, was not here when we had the Davies Project, and it's been so long ago that that study was submitted. I did call and have a conversation after you visited City Hall. I did talk with Erin, and I explained to him that this was done as part of the previous project, and because of the findings, we had actually worked with your environmental, your SEQA document prepare, and determined that it was appropriate that that would be relied upon for purposes of the environmental evaluation. I can certainly email you that study.
That'd be great.
And your staff can, too, of course. But I'll make sure that they have it, and they don't have to spend hours looking for it. So, it's a good question. Any other questions?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to introduce you to Lisa Mangelson.
Hi, I'm Lisa Redmond Mangelson. I live at 1185 Star Avenue in St. Helena. I came to this town when I was 13 years old and have been part of the community for 38 years. I started at the RLS and went through both the middle school and the high school here. And now I have my two little boys, one that's at RLS and one that's in the elementary school, who are happily going through the St. Helena school system as well. As you might know, my dad owns the A&amp;W Restaurant in town, so worked there for many, many years at the A&amp;W, and then went away to college for a bit and came back and made St. Helena my home again. I'm really grateful to have this project, or the opportunity to grow my wine brand. I've been doing this for about 15 years now, producing wine from fruit in St. Helena, which will continue to use Napa, Napa grapes with this project. And I'm really just ready to go to the next step and have the, our own facility where we can produce the wine and look for a tasting room that's in one of the downtown areas, and just sort of take it to the next step. I feel like I've worked really hard to get it to where it is today, and it kind of needs the next thing to, to make, to take it to the next step. We've thought a lot, a lot about this project, and, you know, have really tried to not change the footprint and keep it to what this little community, what belongs in this community. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to present it.
My name is Tom Redmond, and I live at 1620 Sylvaner Avenue. I feel like my daughter's already told a lot about me. But what I can tell you is, I came here 40 years ago. I was, I can just tell you a little bit, is I was brought here by Ned Smith, wine, you know, I don't know if you knew Ned Smith, owned the Wine Country Inn. But anyway, I got to know him, and he was one of the reasons I came here. He, at the time, owned the land at A&amp;W, excuse me. And so we, I came up 40 years ago, I, and started working the A&amp;W here, absolutely fell in love with it, and decided to, I'm still here. So, and I actually ran the A&amp;W for almost 30 years. So I obviously, I met most people in town, and, you know, we were, all the different things that we contributed to, and the swim club, just everything. It was just fun. We really enjoyed it. And Lisa, like I said, she worked for me. She would go to high school, and I don't want to take a lot of your time, but she really did a good job. She used to always, we made arrangements with the school where she could get out a little bit early at lunchtime and run across the street, work lunch, and, and I'd see her going back across, you know, and she'd be eating her lunch on the way back to class. So, you know, we, we really have enjoyed being here in St. Helena. And I'm so, I have to tell you, I'm really happy for this project, for Lisa. This is, she's worked hard on her wine brand. She happened to use my last name, but it is her wine brand, and I'm very proud of her. I really am. And so this has been a long time, we spent a long time coming, going through all the things that are required to get here today. But other than that, I, that's about it, that's about it.
My name is Doug Stanton. I reside at eight six two Mills Lane, and I've met with the applicants twice. And I don't have any major objections to the project. I just want to do, since they have a, have everybody in the room, I want to make sure that the impervious areas, like the crush pad, and, and there's been, I looked at the plans briefly, but there's a retention area to, to capture that, that water. I want to make sure that the grading is done properly so that that water is captured and, and carried away from our vineyard. And then I want to make sure that all the height limitations are within reason. There's, I think there's some standards that when, when projects abut vineyards, they can only, they have to be so far away and so high. So if, if you can put my concerns to rest, I really don't have any big objections to this project.
I can address that. As far as the stormwater goes, everything will be captured. It's not allowed to leave the site. And as far as the building heights are concerned, the, there are two buildings that abut his, that are adjacent to his vineyards, both those will meet required setbacks. They are required to be as far setback as they are tall. So if a building's 15 feet, it needs to be setback 15 feet, as opposed to the normal three feet. And each of those two buildings that are adjacent to his vineyards will be setback the proper distance.
I just have one thing to add. Thank you, Erin. There was a question earlier about the, whether both of the residences were remaining or being converted. Both of the two residents on the property, residences will continue to be residences. There's a primary and a secondary residence. And so those will remain. They're more than 50 years old, so they do have some significance, and they're not being, they're not being redesigned. There is a rather odd piece of language in your zoning for residences. There is a rather odd piece of language in your zoning for residences that are in the industrial area, something to the effect that the primary residence must be occupied by someone who serves as a caretaker or the primary, or I believe there's one other placeholder, a caretaker, primary.
Or security. Yeah, I mean, and the language basically says that the, it needs to be the primary residence of the occupants. Whoever's living there, it's assumed that they shouldn't have two homes.
Right. In other words, it's not going to be a second home or used as a vacation rental. And we've discussed that with the applicant and they understand what that means. So, I just wanted to clarify that. And other than that, you know, we hope that you are as enthusiastic about this project as we are. And we're particularly happy that Lisa will hopefully have a place to continue her, her business and maintain her home here in St. Helena. Thank you.
So I do have just one question to clarify on the residence. So is that saying that these residents, that the structures will be used for employees on site? So is that worker housing or is that?
It's not necessarily worker housing. Anybody who, anybody can essentially live there.
Okay, just whoever lives there is their primary.
It's supposed to be their primary residence.
But we don't really have a way of.
Right.
So I guess the question is, are, are these intended to be guest homes down the road? Or is it intended? Okay.
They're intended to be full-time residences of people who hopefully are looking for reasonably priced housing in St. Helena. Tom just asked me to point out one other thing, that, that the, the winery is included in the Ghost Wineries inventory for the county. And their intent, as you can see from our design, was that it should continue to look pretty much the same as it does today. And so, we have not deviated significantly from that at all. Any further questions for us?
And the purpose of the commercial kitchen is for supplemental revenue or for event use for the?
It's actually a tenant space. And hopefully, it will provide space for a, a commercial kitchen, somebody like a caterer, somebody like, oh, you know, any, any of the licensed caters. And this would be rented by them. But we don't envision people coming there and, and dining or anything like that. I mean, there, there is an allowance, an allowed use in the industrial zoning, is a deli. But this is intended as a place where catering could be done and then taken off-site. It would be picked up there and taken elsewhere. You'll notice we have a very low employee group. We basically envision one person being there during the day and then one person might be there in the evening hours, but just to do something like baking, something that typically occurs earlier in the day. It is a tenant space. And then the space above the tenant space is of storage.
Any other questions? Any other comments? We'll close, public comments?
Before we start, I need to disclose that, that I met with, with Barbara Santin today and also with Pam Starr. And we spoke about the impacts and the, and, you know, about this project and terms of the impacts. And I was speaking with them and getting, getting a sense of how, if they had any concerns. So that's, I need to disclose that.
Okay, thank you. We would ask for confirmation that, of the waiver of the curb and gutter, the standard condition in lieu of this, what we think is a more agricultural oriented frontage for the property. So perhaps Mr. Palmer could just speak to that so we're very clear. If there are no further questions of me.
Is that something Noah or that we decide?
The, the frontage plans were all submitted. There are, there's sidewalk, there's planter strips, there's curb and gutter. So the, I think from our perspective, there was no need for any sort of waiver, anything that they meet city standards.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Essentially, it's a meandering sidewalk where the, the city standard is a, is a straight sidewalk with a set distance for the planter strip. If the planning commission supports that, then obviously the, the Public Works Director will implement the planning commission support.
That's kind of my question, I mean, if we, because it's on the plan, so if we approve it, then, okay.
As proposed.
That suffices as the confirmation that you need?
I'm sorry, I may be a little bit dense, but can we, I just want to make sure I'm really clear. The, the waiver, well, what's shown on the plans, the ministry of the packet and what's in the Marimole document, has curb gutter, has sidewalk. That's what we're approving. We're not asking, not asking for a waiver from that.
It's a meandering sidewalk.
Meandering sidewalk, got it. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Steve. The mitigation measures, I think there's something in here that indicates that, that you're going to be monitoring their use of, on the walk, and I'm on page, oh, it's, I know pages on these, page 16 of the negative deck, mitigation measure one. I think that that probably will answer your question, Bobby.
Which question?
Is that correct, Steve?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Yeah, I've been looking at.
Yeah, I think that's.
The mitigation measure was written to, to try and address the concerns about groundwater condition.
However, the last, the study, oops.
I think it says that the study that was used was done February of 2012. That's what was incorporated into this report. And I wasn't going to bring it up right now, but since you did, my, my concern is that was, that was just the beginning of the drought. That was, we're five years into the drought now. And for a groundwater study to be relevant to, to now, I would think that there would have to be another one, because we've had four years of drought since that last study was done. So that was some of my concern. My main concerns, I really, really like this project. You know, I have nothing against the project, but I had concerns about the water and the wastewater use. But that was part of my comment, is that, yeah. Because that, the, the study that you're mitigating with was done in 2012. At least that's what it says on page, on page 15 of 28, just before that.
Right. The mitigation measure one that Chairperson Kistner referenced doesn't refer to the study from 2012. It's a standalone mitigation measure related to.
You mean that is not the, okay, it says, "A recent report prepared for the Napa County, blah, 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 blah." Dated February 25th, 2012, found that the aquifer under St. Helena has proven to be stable over time. And that's the study that I am, that it mentions that, that study, that study was incorporated into this, into this plan.
Right.
So am I, is it wrong for me to infer from that, that that was the study referred to on page 16?
Mitigation measure one on page 16 requires an additional study.
So that has been done?
No, it's prior to issuance of building permit.
Okay, so that has not been done yet? So there is going to be another groundwater study?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you. That wasn't clear to me.
Ms. Vanette, would you like to start the discussion, please?
Okay. Let's see. Okay, on page 173 of the other stuff, 173 of the packet literature, in the second paragraph, it says, it seems to be in conflict with the fourth paragraph in this, in the following way. It says, "All existing external water, water use for the landscaping is from the existing well and will remain unchanged." And then in paragraph four, it says, "The winery's process water use and all landscaping water use is from the existing well." So I don't know if I'm mistaken in inferring from that, that it means that the existing well is going to do what paragraph two said, it's going to do the landscaping, but in addition, it's going to be doing the winery's process water. That, that was not clear, that just doesn't make sense to me. And if it's true that the well is going to be doing the winery process water in addition to the landscaping, then on page 174, the baseline water use is based on just the landscaping. So that the baseline water use figure is going to be off. If it's true that the water processing is, you know, the winery water processing is also now part of that well use, because that's not being used now, because there's no winery there. So I'm, that, that implies to me that the baseline water use figures are off. Unless you can show me where I'm wrong.
Well, I mean, I'm having trouble following because of the page number, I don't think I have the same page number. But, but you're in the water use analysis report, which.
It's the first page of the water analysis.
And so I think the confusion may be that the water use analysis report is, is looking strictly at the city water system. So it's looking at baseline use of what's being used on the city water system now versus what used to be in the city water system after the project is built. And that's probably about as much as I can.
Well, it says that the, this is for the external use. It says the external use. That it says that it will only consist of domestic internal water use. No, excuse me. It mentioned that the external water use will remain the same. But on the other page, it says that the external use is going to include winery's process water. So it's not going to remain the same. I mean, unless you can tell me where, where my thinking is off.
So the author of the water report is in the, is in the tenets.
Oh, good. Yay. Maybe they can explain it.
But we could, we could go through the rest of your questions and.
Okay. Well, since that, okay, so if that is true, if I'm doing that right, then, okay. Okay, so the baseline is what you're saying, though, is only for domestic, but that would, that wouldn't, that would change how the well water, how the aquifer water was, was, was calculated. If, you know, I'm, which was it? Did it include the winery processing or did it not? And because I have other questions about that on page nine, 190.
Just to be clear, the baseline is the current water use on the property? And then you, you look at incremental increases in the water use from that point?
Then the, then for the proposed use, it would, not for the internal, but for the proposed use for the external would, wherever there are some tables about that, that would change the number on that table. That's what I'm just, there would need to be consistency if they're only counting.
Bobby, is your question that it's, doesn't seem logical, that, that it can be a net neutral water use if you're going from sort of an unused resident?
No, my question, my question is this. I'm finding something confusing in how different metrics were, were gotten to. And the, all of these tables are based on those metrics. So if the metrics for the use for the well water are off because it wasn't counting the winery processing part of it, then any tables or any, you know, any of the models that were run with that figure would not be right and would need to be run again. I'm just really concerned about the water and it sounds like, I, that just didn't make sense to me. If you can explain it to me and make it make sense, then, then.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is the question is, what's the incremental increase in well water use above the baseline?
Yes.
Yes. And, and it says here, you know, because it's confusing, because it says it's going to stay the same, but then it says it's going to include the winery processing, which means it, it isn't going to stay the same. So that, yes, thank you. That's, that's my question there. And does it affect any of the other calculations in the, in the report? And then on page 190. Oh, I spent so much time, it was ridiculous. But anyway, I was trying to figure out how they got to, you know, 926 gallons a day. And I added it up in a whole bunch of different ways. For one thing, I don't know if you've looked at it, but it, it is, it adds it up, it's adding up based on the number of days a week that people work and the number of meals made per day and the number of residents that are on the property. And they calculated with eight residents and six employees. So, you know, it said that they were going to have six, but I thought three of them were half-time. So I recalculated it with six full-time employees and with six half-time employees to see how they got to 926, because I was just curious. And, and none of the numbers match. So I would like to know how they got to the daily water use, because it doesn't make sense with the numbers that are there. And it's not that much off, but it's not accurate. So again, all those tables are based on a figure that doesn't make sense. So I'm just wanting to know about it and I'm, I'm not questioning whether the result will be the same or anything, but it's water and I think we really need to be careful about how it's accounted for. So let's see. Yeah, also, I was wondering, wait a minute, I think, okay, yeah, and the other thing was the groundwater, if the groundwater support used in the application was dated, I already said that one. And then there was a, the Davies septic feasibility report is incorporated into this report. That's what it says. So I don't quite understand what that is for, too. I mean, I'm assuming there's a, I mean, that, that's far away. I'm not sure what that means. So I just wanted to have that clarified, since that was actually part of this report. And I guess also, and you can, this, I guess this is a point, there are certain metrics that I've read when cumulative effects are addressed in negative decks. And I just didn't see, and I know there, there are, there are specific metrics, you know, and they have to, you have talked about all the businesses in the area and so forth, and talk about the cumulative effects. And I thought that was required in a, in a negative deck, but maybe it's not. But I didn't see any in there and I wanted to ask you about that. Because cumulative effects have been something that's come up in this room many times over the past year. And I thought that that was part of a mitigated, you know, the negative deck, so.
Cumulative impacts are typically looked at as a part of a SEQUAD analysis as appropriate. So if you have a specific section, so obviously traffic, you need to look at cumulative impacts because there's existing cars plus, that's where you get to the baseline. Similarly, well use.
In aquifer.
So you have, you have existing well use as your baseline and then your incremental increase in that. So that's where you would look at cumulative impacts as appropriate.
Well, Crocker Star, yeah, Crocker Star is all on well. And, you know, and, yeah, exactly. So I didn't see it, but did I miss it or was it not there?
Well, that, I would say with the respect to the water use, the, the project, one of the mitigation measures that they do an analysis, hydrology analysis of all water, well users in the vicinity to determine what needs to be happen, what needs to happen, I don't have the specific mitigation language in front of me, but that's a condition in order to address any potential impacts associated with an increase in well use above the baseline.
So that study that is yet to be done will be coming back with that language in terms of, with the language of cumulative effects? Is that what you're saying?
Again, I don't have the specific language in front of me, but that is an example of how cumulative effects would be analyzed and are addressed in the well use specifically.
And then I also wondered in terms of noise, although that's kind of tricky, because noise is kind of like, you can't really complain because it's winery and agriculture. So I don't, I don't even know if you can talk about noise.
So noise, you actually measure the existing noise levels and then you, you have an acoustical engineer who has the data as to what these types of uses will generate noise-wise. But interestingly, decibels don't, they don't add as much as, you know, it's not additive. Like if your use creates 65 decibels and then I, I'm also making 65, it doesn't instantly get to 120.
No, but it's more in the area, but, you know.
Exactly.
And forklifts and that sort of thing. So I just didn't, it's so, that wasn't considered, I mean, how is that looked at? It, you know, I, I'm just thinking, there are no residents around and, and I know you guys are, I mean, these applicants are very good neighbors. And I know Star Crocker has been really, really good neighbors. They really put so much of their noise-making stuff behind walls and so forth. So I, I know that. But I'm just thinking the valley is, it just, sound travels, you know? And I was just wondering, I don't understand how, where to look for or how to get a cumulative effect.
There is not, cumulative analysis is not done for noise impacts.
It's not.
Because it's not additive. Like I said, you don't, if your use generates 65 and I generate 65, we don't always, all of a sudden get to 130 decibels. It's just.
It's two places where it's, okay.
So, so the, the general plan identifies acceptable decibel ratings for different zoning districts. Industrial is the highest allowable decibel ratings for uses. And then the noise study would identify assumptions based on the type of use for the decibel levels that would be generated by that.
Okay, I'll, I'll let it follow there.
Typically done by an average. Because obviously, you know, if I drop a bottle, it's going to make a noise instantly, but you have to, you have to measure the decibels over a certain period of time and then average it.
I understand, but what I'm thinking is, because noise travels at night especially across the valley floor. So if you have 65 coming there.
Bobby, I think you've answered your question. I, I think we've had enough on noise now.
I think we've had enough on noise now.
Enough noise?
Yeah, I think we've had enough.
You're going to shut me down? All right. Okay. I'll talk to you more at some other time.
Mary, do you have some comments, please?
Well, I just, on this wastewater, I think the confusion is, I think the number is right now that I looked at it, because the confusion is the meals, which are 500 over the week, and so when you back it down to the daily and you multiply by the five, then you get that 926 or 927 number.
Really? Okay, so I must have done it wrong, because I dated by five days, six days, and seven days, just to see, you know, because, you know, I didn't know what they were doing, but, okay.
It's about like 71, 72 meals a day, times five gallons a meal, gets you around 300 and something.
Well, if it's five days a week, it's 100 meals a day, so it's easier to do five days a week. If they work five days a week, I wasn't sure what they were basing on, how many days they're going to work.
I see what you're saying.
So that's 100, yeah, a day.
Mary, do you have some comments? Go ahead, Chair Turgeon.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a nice reuse of the existing structures that are on the property, to put the barn, you know, to use the way it's being done and adhering to the standards. I particularly like the, I don't know if it's called the ranch house, or that, it has a really nice character and it's being maintained. And so when all is said and done, I don't think it's going to look that much different, but it's going to be a lot nicer and more functional. The only concern I had about it at all, I don't even know if it's legitimate, it relates to the catering, which is that in this district, you can have catering and it can have retail sales. And it would, I think we would have got a slightly different traffic analysis, because I believe it was just based on the employees. You know, and I don't know if that bothers anybody, but it's just a point that I wanted to make about the project. But otherwise, I have no issue with it whatsoever. I think the meandering sidewalk makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I echo what Mary said. You know, my thoughts are not really concerned so much, it's just, you know, down, down the road, making sure that these uses stay as they're defined. I think that's where some challenges occurred in another project down the road. And so I think it's just important that the catering kitchen doesn't become a cooking class, become a whatever, and the overnight accommodations don't become, they stay a residence for whoever, hopefully affordable housing or workforce housing would be terrific. But all of, I think as long as what's designed is built and what's built is used as it's intended now, that it all looks terrific. And I'm in the wine business, so I know all these other things can be used as well, and they all have their places, but I think that if we're in good faith passing, approving this project as it's defined, that I just hope that we stay within that. But I think it looks lovely. I think you, the lovely wine brand have had it, it's lovely. And so, good for you, I think. Congratulations and best wishes for a very successful project.
Commissioner Parker?
Commissioner Sweeney, I echo your sentiments 100%, that it's, is not a concern, but a thought, is that just to make sure that these are what they, they stay as they are defined today and don't expand beyond, beyond that. And I also like the meandering sidewalk, just like I like the one on Medron Avenue. So I think it's a nice addition.
You know, I would like to say I'm something more not about the noise. But first of all, on page two is, well, they're not listening. On page two is where it says, on page two of the negative deck is where it talks about existing onsite dwellings could be occupied by live-work units. That's what I was referring to, okay. And I really echo everyone's sentiments with respect to this project. I think it's really nice, too. But I want to know, if we approve it tonight and before that study is done, that study will, if there's something that's not right about the study, what's, what will happen then?
If staff reviews the study, hydrogeologic studying determines it's, the impact on the groundwater is too significant, we would not issue a building permit.
Okay. And then I would also like to, which I, I totally trust and respect the current owners, but one never knows when something will be sold. And what I would like to do...
Bobby, we're not going into the future.
Wait a second. I would like to put some restrictions on this, on this use permit. And I believe this, I can at least bring that up. And I would like, the restrictions I'd like to put, the current zoning already restricts some of them, but the zoning may change. And so I would like to be clear that there would be no expansion of the winery, that there would be no tastings, no direct sales or other commercial activities, no events, and no custom crush. And I would just like to have that on the permit, so that if it is sold to someone who is, you know, a big corporation, or someone who is not as thoughtful and such a good neighbor, that those restrictions will be on the permit going forward. And since they're already, I don't think they would be any problem for the current applicants, but they would certainly perhaps help others who might be uncomfortable with what might happen if it were to be passed on to someone who weren't, weren't as thoughtful. It would perhaps put their minds at rest.
If the zoning were to change, though, that would be a moot...
Yeah, staff can address some of those concerns. So the use permit will, will limit the current winery use to what's proposed and what's being approved today. Any expansion of that winery use would require an amendment to the use permit, which would go back through the zoning process, which includes approval by the planning commission. Similarly, the existing zoning district does not allow events to occur at this location, so they're prohibited as it's currently written. If the zoning district were to change, then the winery use in theory could become non-conforming. And again, any event, I believe all zoning districts require use permits for events to occur on properties as well. So essentially, all those prohibitions are currently existing, based on the current use permit and the existing zoning regulations.
So you're telling me that there's no reason to put restrictions on a permit if there, you know, I mean, there's no, there would be no reason to do this? That's what you're saying?
That's exactly right.
Because there have been other situations where it was really important to have had those restrictions.
But the use permits were changed. I, you know, I was, I threw that out there just to kind of, I believe, make sure the conversation happens, but if the zoning ordinance changes, then...
The zoning ordinance changes.
Right, changes, and so... The permit stays the same, pardon, until the change, until the permit changes.
But they then would have an ability, if...
If they get a new permit.
Right, exactly.
They would have to...
And a new owner would have it. So I don't think we should overly restrict it. I just wanted to remind, more so for the public who might be following this and saying, wait, remember when that happened with another project? Those permits were adjusted, so we're saying, this is how we feel we are supporting this project, and we're supporting it as it is.
Well, they wouldn't necessarily be adjusted, but go ahead.
Can I point out that our condition number 10 does say retail sales and tasting are prohibited at the winery? Is there a reason we wouldn't add events if we're...
No, if the commission wishes to add events. So that, the retail sale prohibition gets to the point that Commissioner Sweeney made, that retail sales are allowed use for certain, certain uses in the industrial district. So, you know, if today is a catering kitchen, but then there was a retail store proposed that met the allowances, then that could come in by right without that prohibition. So that's there. However, events are specifically prohibited by the zoning, so you could add that condition if the commission wishes, but from staff's perspective, it's already in place given the current zoning regulations.
Well, I mean, for instance, could there be an event at the catering place?
I don't believe so based on the zoning. I don't have the code in front of me, but...
Okay. I was just curious why we specifically in number 10 address the sales and tasting and not some of the other things.
I think the retail, because it's allowed. So that, actually, I think you'd asked a little while ago in the discussion, is we do allow the retail sales. So I believe this was to set that up.
Oh, you're talking about the catering. You think the retail sales in number 10 goes to the catering?
That's what I...
I thought it went to the winery.
But I think it was a really good point, anyway, that you made. I think maybe we should be specific about there not being retail at the catering. I mean, if that, I would feel comfortable if everyone else agrees to, to have that part of it, be part of it.
So the commission can add that if they wish to amend the current resolution with the motion.
Yeah, I, just so I'm clear, I thought number 10 was coming straight out of the zoning ordinance, as it is, with respect to the winery part of the operation.
That's correct. That was the intention.
I guess it'd be, well, you interpret that number 10. I mean, that's, that's...
Do we need...
Retail sales and tasting are prohibited.
So number 10 specifies the winery. So if you would like to also prohibit retail sales from the catering site, then the language would be amended to clarify that it's for the entire use or all uses onsite. And you could do that based on the scope of the environmental analysis that was done. The applicants may have some input on that, on that condition or question, if, if there is one.
We'll reopen a public comment here. Donna, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you. Donna Oldford, planning consultant for the applicant. The, as staff explained, the prohibition for retail sales relates strictly to the winery. The commercial kitchen is an allowed use. It does not require recognition in the, with a use permit. The intent is for this to be a tenant space for a caterer to prepare catering for events and then to have a pickup there. However, if you prohibit, I think it adds some confusion, and staff can clarify this, if you, if you prevent any retail sales there, ostensibly if there's some person working in the industrial park who wanted to walk over and buy a sandwich at lunch, then eliminate two trips. Basically, they couldn't do that, because they couldn't, you couldn't buy a sandwich there, you couldn't, it's not a deli, it's not, although a deli would be an allowed use. But I think that, I wonder if what we're really accomplishing by saying there can't be any retail sales, because basically we just cut off any opportunity for people working in that area that's kind of difficult to get in and out of most times of the day. They couldn't go over there and buy a sandwich, for instance. Or you couldn't have someone go in and, and buy, let's say someone calls and says, I want a certain number of items. You've got a caterer, you're really, really limiting their ability to do their catering business if you say no retail sales. And what are, what's the difference between retail to a caterer and retail to someone who wants a self-catering and they want to just come pick it up and take it home? I don't think we're really accomplishing much to do that. And frankly, I think that we're losing a real opportunity to save trips and allow people who work in that industrial park a place to buy their lunch, because I know that's, that's a problem over there now. People have to get in and out of traffic and go somewhere to buy a simple lunch. If there's anything the staff has to add to that, we would prefer to not have that restriction imposed. We don't think it's necessary, and we think it's actually counterproductive to the dynamics of the business park.
I would just add, there is an existing catering kitchen that operates out of the space next to Dean and DeLuca. It's a caterer, primarily cater on Wednesdays, you can go buy a sandwich from them. So I just said, there is, that is an example of how a catering use may have an accessory retail use that, from staff's perspective, doesn't generate a lot of impacts, but may provide some additional income to the use there.
Could you open the public hearing?
Yeah, it's open.
Yes.
I raised it principally because it wasn't addressed in the traffic analysis at all.
That's the only reason to do, to look at it.
No, I don't, and if, if it's all just people driving around in, in the industrial area, maybe it doesn't matter, but that's the only reason.
I don't think we would have, you know, there would be no signage, there would be no reason for anyone to think there was a retail facility back there. I think the purpose of the retail is primarily that someone could go there and purchase a sandwich if they're working in the area. It would allow the caterer that source of revenue that may be very, very important to them, but I think it's mostly a matter of convenience and a matter of having the public, for instance, if I have a party at my house and I call and place an order, I want to, I want to patronize a local business, and I know there's a catering kitchen, I will call them instead of calling somebody in Napa. And I'll say, okay, here's what I want, and can you have it ready? And I'll just pick it up. And so I do that, and that's, of course, all of that is sales revenue to our city instead of to another city. So I think...
And your, your car trip essentially substitutes for the delivery trip.
Right, right, right.
Except that most catering orders are more than single, you know.
Pardon me?
Most catering orders are larger, so, I mean, that's my only concern, too. I mean, I think it's terrific, but if it weren't, if that wasn't considered in the traffic city, I think it should be, because you don't, it might be tremendously successful. And it might mean a lot of cars and, you know, and a lot of more activity than you anticipate. I mean, you guys don't know what's going to happen.
Just to clarify, the use proposed is a commercial kitchen. Any, any retail sales would be accessory to that unless it was, a new use was proposed. But one way the commission may be able to do this is to specify that any retail sales from these locations are accessory to the primary use. So then it kind of identifies that it's not a retail deli as the primary, it's an accessory use, which allows some flexibility but limits the overall use.
And then if it turned into that, then you, they would, you just need to change the use permit? I mean, what do you think?
Well, that's a, that's a somewhat of a, yes, they would need to modify the use permit because the use was conditioned. It gets back to the point, this is an allowed use. Retail sales, a retail deli is a permitted use in the location, so the only limitation is, is generated by the concern over the scope of the traffic study.
That's my going, I don't know, maybe some neighbors or maybe other people have other considerations, but that's, that was my...
Well, Bobby, we had, we have someone in town that does that right now, and I know because I just used, I just used them.
Well, I have no, nothing against the use.
And we went and picked up a pig.
Well, I have no, I have no objection to the use. I just am worried, I had the same concern that Commissioner Cobestine had, that if it wasn't included in the traffic study, it might be, because it sounds like it might be a wonderful, a wonderful, popular thing. And I would hope it would be.
Let me say, I think that this wasn't an oversight in the traffic study. We're talking about pickups and deliveries. And so a pickup in an SUV would be a pickup, and a pickup in a big catering truck would be, too. I think we should look back to the carrying capacity of this business as it's proposed. We're talking about one employee during the day and maybe one part-time or one in the evening. And if you had a deli on the scale of, say, Satui or Dean and DeLuca, that would be totally inconsistent. That is not what we're looking at here. We just want the person who is the tenant in that facility to not have their hands completely tied, where they can't do any retail sales. And then what, how do you define retail sales? We're saying a pickup, takeout, not deli, but catering operation is just that. If he had wanted a deli there, we would have said a deli, and a deli is an allowed use. It does not require a use permit. So that is not what they're asking for. They're just asking for a little bit of flexibility for the tenant who uses that space. And so, you know, I think we're forfeiting the convenience factor, and we're forfeiting the question of additional trips added if we preclude that as a possibility. Any further?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Stanton, again, with all respect to the Redmans and Donna, this is not what was described to me at all. And, you know, we have a residential, we live right next door to this. And if this is the case where we're going to have catering and retail sales, I don't, I don't approve of this project at all. This is totally, I had my concerns initially with a catering and a winery, and I felt comfortable with it because it was going to be someone that was going to do catering and do outside. But when you start doing sandwiches and you've got someone that's been in the restaurant business, this could turn into a very high-profile, high-traffic situation. It's not something that I want to work next to or live next to. So, you know, this is totally different than what you described to me. And I, you know, I'm kind of been blindsided here. You told me it was going to be like catering. Well, you're having retail sales. This could be extremely popular and really change the whole focus of, of the neighborhood. I feel very slighted here.
Well, that certainly was not the intention. The intention here is that this should be a tenant space for a caterer, and the question of a retail sale is something that is basically just, I don't think there's any, any reason to think that this is a deli. And I guess I... And I guess I would just ask my client, if you're, if you're comfortable with a restriction that you can't do any retail sales.
The only thing I always think-
You have to stand up, Tom.
I'm Tom Redmond at Savanor. You know, I hadn't really thought of this as really being a problem. I just thought like, just like the OK Tire, you know? Sometimes they might come over and want, you know, two or three sandwiches, you know? I, no, I can't do that, you know? I don't know. I didn't think of it as being really an issue, you know? But, you know, that's the only thing I was thinking is, is that it, what we explained is exactly what we, you know, it is a catering facility. But I, you know, I've never thought that, you know, if somebody came across the street or, or somebody, you know, over at the place right next to us that, you know, where the guys work, they came over and wanted a couple sandwiches, that would be great. But I don't, I don't ever see this as, as you say, some huge thing that's going to happen. It's, it would be something that would be, you know, just insignificant, you know, as far as, as far as being able to, they did come in to be able to sell them some sandwiches, I guess. But I, I don't know. I, I, you know, I'm kind of caught a little bit because I, I just never thought of it as being really a big issue, that if somebody came in, there's no signage, there's nothing. We're not, that's not, that's not going to be the, the focus of that facility, is that's not what it is.
So I would just like to, just to provide the commission with the code language. So permitted uses in this zoning district, catering establishments, including retail sales of items prepared on the premises. There's a concern over the, the scale of those retail sales. As mentioned, staff, I believe it is within your purview to limit any retail sales to occur from the commercial kitchen to accessory, meaning they, a restaurant could not become the primary use. It could just be something that, as Mr. Redmond has mentioned, could be done occasionally. But the primary use would be the commercial kitchen for catering purposes with accessory retail sales, essentially. Typically, it's limited to 10% or 15% of the floor area of the, of the use.
And that seems reasonable. And given that it's a permitted use to begin with, it's kind of moot. If anything, we do that, we're further restricting it, which, if that makes the neighbors happy, that's good, but it's not essential, in my view. I mean, if it's permitted use, it's already there.
Yeah, it's, it's not a conditional use. It's the, someone can go rent a business and make it a catering business.
And just to add to that, if someone were to come in to propose a, a commercial use at this location as a standalone, we would not look at a traffic report.
Right.
It doesn't drive the number of trips that staff would request a traffic report for reoccupancy of an existing building with a catering use not anticipated to generate enough traffic for a report.
Yeah. That would not be my concern. My concern would be if it expands to commercial, i.e., events. But this is not what you're talking about. So I'm perfectly comfortable with it as it is.
I, I, this is a strange zoning because there are residents, you know, in this industrial zoning. And if it's going to disrupt a neighborhood, I mean, I'm wondering what, it, it is a, I mean, there are people who live there. Oh, well, I, I don't know. I mean, I just don't know how, how I-
But the zoning allows the use. That's, it's not even-
And to heck with the neighbors.
It's a permitted use.
I understand, but we could put a condition.
They don't even need a use permit to have it, really.
I know it, but we could put a-
I've had that discussion.
We could put a condition on it.
Do I have a, a motion, please?
I mean, what, what did you just do, Grace? I'm not sure. I was just-
I guess for a motion.
But we-
We're, we're going to do a motion now.
Okay. Doesn't finish the discussion.
Oh, excuse me. Is this?
Not this. I mean, not that. Is your motion to, to vote on the permit?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Andrew Simpson, 1104 Adams Street, project engineer, wanted to just talk to Steve about a couple items, or just one item in particular, item 27, which talks about-
We'd already closed public comment, sir.
I thought we just were talking about-
She closed the public comment.
You didn't notice, you didn't understand.
I thought that we were just-
It's their engineer, she did.
People were talking, I was going to clarify a couple points that I know were going to be a problem down the road, but-
It's their engineer answering Steve's question.
I hear a motion.
I move to adopt the mitigated negative declaration to mitigate monitoring and reporting program for the project and accept the required findings and approve the demolition permit, design review, and use permit for the proposed winery and commercial kitchen at 867 Dowdell Lane.
With a condition that we said before.
Which condition?
The condition's in there at number 10 already.
Which condition?
Oh, it's already there. I thought we were, you were going to add.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm moving to have it without the add.
Oh, okay.
And I second without, as is.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
No.
Vice Chair Cobersstein?
Yes.
Chair Kishner?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair Kishner. Staff does have a few things that are worth mentioning. First, you'll notice that there has been some changes to the agenda. We're adopting new software that will help roll the agenda out as, in addition to the broadcast that goes out to the community online and for our retention of the, of the meeting videos. So always along with rolling out new software that affects multiple elements of the project review. There are a few glitches, so just please work with us. There's a, a couple elements of the, the agenda itself you'll see that are new and different. Page numbers are there, as has been requested by numerous commissioners over, over a period of time. So hopefully you will find it an improvement, as will the public. But again, just work with us for the next few weeks as we work out any glitches. Second, we are also, are experiencing some staffing changes in the department. In addition to having Lily Bianco come on to assist as a contract planner, Jim Kerrigan's last day is tomorrow. So Jim is moving on to a new position. And with that, obviously, the department will be short-staffed, and so we are all dedicated to continuing our customer service levels, but obviously with one less person, especially such a knowledgeable person as Mr. Kerrigan, we will be somewhat impacted. However, Xenia Gamaro has agreed to step in to assist in our building permit questions and, and helping customers at the front counter. So again-
Doesn't she do?
So just please, with the public, bear with us as we work through that staffing challenge. And the recruitment is open. So please take a look at the human resources website for a review of that, that position if people are interested.
Is Kerrigan with us still, or he's someplace else?
Oh, no, he took a job with a different city, city of Napa.
Okay.
So the Hunter EIR, we anticipate that document being published for review and comment by the public in early December. That'll be a 45-day public review and comment period. If anyone has any questions for me, encourage people to contact me, but that, we anticipate it getting out in early December. I'm, I'm working with the urban planning partners, the consultant on it, to finalize the, the admin draft right now, and then they will put out the public draft shortly. And then finally, the Sonoma State holds an annual planning commissioner conference. I sent out a notification of that to the commissioners, and please, if you are interested, just reply to staff, and I will get us registered next week. If I don't hear from you by next week, maybe next Friday, I'll just assume that, that you're not interested, and, and we'll go from there.
Did I recall?
It's December 3rd, I'm sorry. It's a Saturday meeting, so obviously, you know, it may affect some people's schedules. But I will be there, and I believe Commissioner Monette's interested in going. It's a good conference, and it's, it's fairly affordable, and they provide you lunch, so that's a pretty good deal.
Totally fun.
So yeah, that's it for the department report. Just wanted to let people know about those things that are occurring.
We have a meeting-
Oh.
Saturday?
Oh, thank you very much. The one thing I didn't put on my list. So yes, the, appreciate that, Chair Kishner. So the RFP review public meeting is Saturday at the Fire Hall. The developers have been invited to the city. They are presenting their projects individually. The public is pleased, encouraged to attend, as that's the primary purpose of this meeting, is to hear from, input from the public on these proposals. It's been noticed as a special meeting of the city council and the planning commission, so that way you all can attend if you wish. However, there is no expectation from staff for any participation or, or attendance from the planning commissioners. However, you know, it's always encouraged, but it's primarily intended to allow the public to speak directly to staff on their input, to provide input on those responses to the RFPs. The chamber is also holding a meeting on Thursday that is open to the public for the same purpose. However, the Saturday meeting is the staff-sponsored one that we are proposing.
What time is the Thursday meeting?
I believe it's 9:00 AM, but it's, it's not a city-sponsored meeting, so we're not involved in the scheduling of that. But the, it's 9:00 AM on Thursday, I believe, and 10:00 AM on Saturday.
To 12, is it two hours or?
Oh, we did not, I don't believe we limited it to two hours, but the information's gone out on E-News, I believe.
Yeah. And I was just curious, is that why the, the agenda didn't come out in the regular way that it usually does?
Because of the changes to the, yeah, that's right. So we're, we're, yes, the, the agenda is, like I said, it's new software. We're trying to quickly learn how to implement it. But again, there's always a few kinks. And then also the staffing changes just are affecting our ability to get some things